Call to order, the October 23rd, 2024, regular board meeting for the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board to order. We have a roll call.
Figueroa, Goodrich.
Here.
Aide, Holback, Lewis.
Here.
Ruzinski.
Here.
Rego.
Here.
We have a call. Our Board Secretary Leo Figueroa will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting. May I have a motion to appoint John Ruzinski to be Secretary Pro Temp for tonight's meeting?
So moved?
Yes.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical world, with liberty and justice for all.
Sam, please read our Fenton mission, beliefs, and bison way statement.
Okay, the Fenton mission statement, cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Then belief statement, successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment, diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community, school and home collaborators one, we champion innovative teaching and engage learning with state-of-the-art facilities, we infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture, we prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility, we immerse students in authentic life experiences. The bison way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the
Next item is recognitions. Sam?
Okay, normally I turn it over to Kate Ward, however, not this month. This week is Principal Appreciation Week, and we are celebrating that here today with Kate Ward with Friday being Principal Appreciation Day. How about a round of applause for Kate? Really, I can't say enough of the job that Kate has done for us, but let me start with leadership. She's an exceptional leader, and she's making a huge difference here in our school community. And so we thank you so much for all of your efforts. I'd also say her commitment to students and staff is unmatched. She's supportive of our students and our staff, and our staff feel empowered to do the things they need to do on a daily basis because she knows she cares, they know she cares and values what they do. I would also say she's an excellent communicator, whether it be in person or via email, she's constantly keeping our staff up to date on what's going on and is also communicating with our students what our expectations are. So with all that being said, again, Kate, we are fortunate to have you. You're doing an excellent job, and we want to celebrate you here tonight, so. And we have a card for you, Kate, so.
Sam.
With some signatures.
With some signatures, and we also have a large goody bag.
And a goody bag.
Thanks, uh.
Aw, look, I appreciate you.
Thanks.
Do you have any words to say?
I feel like all I do is talk. But yeah, no, it's, you know, it's, it's an honor and a role that I am so thrilled to be lucky enough to take on every day, so it's been great.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is informational item, Sam?
We have no public comments.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's all right.
That's the whole part.
Okay.
Karen, do we have any public comments tonight?
No, we do not.
Yes. All right, so let's move on to the first informational item tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Bruce, but Lauderback and Amen has completed a financial audit. You'd like to come forward, and Bruce will introduce you.
Sure. Mr. McCain Thorpe is here this evening. He's the onsite manager for Fenton, and I think he probably has some other accounts as well, but of course, this is the most important one, I think he would say. So we're pleased to be that he's here tonight. I think this is your fourth year, I think, McCain.
Yeah.
Fourth year completing the audits.
I started.
Yeah, so we kind of broke him in, so he's still with us, so that's great. But he's going to review the audit financials from the 2324 school year.
Awesome. Thank you, Bruce. Is this sound, by the way? Do I have to press anything, or is it good?
It sounds good.
All right, perfect. So yeah, so like Bruce said, my name's McCain Thorpe. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. I'm the audit manager on Fenton. So right away, I'd just like to say thank you to Bruce, Mary, Maggie, and especially Vanessa. Vanessa, I don't think there's a lot of districts where the person that's in Vanessa's role would be able to get through a whole entire audit pretty much by herself. It was extremely impressive. She was quick on support to give us questions answered, so I just would like to make sure Vanessa is noted for how much she went above and beyond with the kind situation at the business office was in, so definitely thank you to Vanessa. All right, so once again, we'll touch on the ISB AFR score. The school district has once again received the score of recognition, which is the highest score that you can receive in the financial profile. So looks at your cash flows, takes in regards to your debt, and so congratulations again on receiving the highest score. Okay, so to begin, we'll go into the thick packet, and also if there's any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask. This is meant to be as informal and more of a conversation. So we'll go to page number one. This is your audit opinion. And so once again, the school district has received the opinion of a modified cash basis, which is consistent in the past years, so congratulations again on receiving the opinion. We'll now go to page number seven. All right, this is the beginning of your management's discussion and analysis. So what these pages kind of do is they provide more of a narrative with how the past fiscal year went. It looks at what the balances were in the prior year and compares them to the current fiscal year, any balances, and kind of looks to see was there any certain areas that were higher or lower in the past. But kind of the best part of this section is we provide a kind of like a cutout of, with all the numbers, and then we send it to Bruce and the business office, and it kind of allows the district to explain why certain items increase or decrease in the district's own words. So as accounting, you know, numbers are numbers, but it kind of helps more to provide more of a story behind them. All right, we'll go to your financial statements. That is page number 19. Okay, so this is your balance sheet at your fund level. So you have your general, which is your educational, working cash toward your I M R F, your capital projects, and then your non-major, which would include your operations maintenance, your transportation, and so forth. So then this on the balance sheet shows your assets, your liabilities, and then what the ending fund balances. So we flip over to page number 21. Once again, this at a fund level, but now it's showing your income statement, so it's showing your revenue, your expenses, and any other funding sources, so as debt issuances or transfers in and out. So one thing that you can get from this page is that if you look in the general, in the, from last, from last year's fund balance to this year's fund balance, there was an increase by about 132,000. And one thing I like to notice too is the fund balance for general is very healthy as it covers about six months of your expenditure, so awesome job there, which is also consistent with prior audits as well. All right, we'll go to page number 23. So this is where it's the densest of the accounting of the audit report. I always say you can't fall asleep at night, crack open to this page, and you'll be out in two or three pages. It goes into what our accounting methodology was and how we took our testing and applied it to how the district does your accounting. It also dives into, you know, the capital assets, so how many fixed assets the district currently holds. It also looks into the debt to see how much principal is paid during the year and what's due within the following fiscal year. Okay. Now we'll flip pretty deep back there to page number 77. So if you recall earlier, I kind of went in and showed that there was an increase in fund balance for, from last year to this year, and this page and the pages that follow, they kind of help show how that increase in fund balance came about. So what these pages go is they go fund by fund. So this is the educational, which is part of your general fund, and we have the original budget, your final budget, the actual, and then what the amount with the balance was last year. So you can go in and look to see what was, was there certain revenue that you guys earned more than what was budgeted, or were there any expenditures that were less than what you thought they would be to come about the 132,000 increase in fund balance? Okay, so I'm going to pause there if there's any questions before going to the management letter. And feel free just to speak freely. I don't like calling on people. I'm not a teacher, so. I know it's a lot, too. Bruce has my email, so if there's any questions that come about, if you read further into it, please let Bruce know. Okay, all right, cool. All right, we'll move to the management letter then. So this is going to be the smaller booklet. It's not bound, it's probably just a paper copy. So kind of what exactly is a management letter? So the management letter is recommendations that GASB, which is the Government and County Standard Board, they pass along to us to then pass along to the districts to make sure that the district is operating as efficiently as possible. So for this year, there were two current year recommendations. They both kind of delve around new GASB standards, so GASB likes to pass certain new standards to keep us in business, as I like to say, so we'll work with Bruce and the district to make sure these standards are implemented. And then there were five prior year recommendations where one of the prior year recommendations was implemented, and four were repeated, two are in regards of policies, and three, excuse me, are in regards of policies, and one is a GASB standard that will be implemented next fiscal year. So I'll pause there if there's any questions on the management letter.
Can we have someone discuss why four was repeated, or what's going on that was the case?
So, so two of them are capital asset and outstanding check policy. So we're working with Bruce. So you guys use, I believe Bruce Press or Board Docs?
We do, yep.
Press. So Press kind of has, they provide kind of their minimum, whereas GASB, their capital asset policy, outstanding check policy is more in-depth. So we're working with Bruce to make sure that the policies are updated to meet GASB standards. And then the fund balance on compliance, it was the transportation fund where expenditures were higher than expected for unforeseen circumstances, but talking with Bruce, the business office has a plan to help bring the fund balance back into compliance, which can be done, for example, through a transfer.
And I think Bruce, that's going to happen later.
It will, yep. It's on resolution this evening.
That was two, what about the other two?
So that was, and then the GASB, that's one of the GASBs. So GASB 100 is the accounting changes, so that got implemented. And then your two other ones were capital asset and outstanding check policy. So going to work with Bruce to make sure that the press policies are updated to meet the standard of what GASB recommends. The fund balance on compliance, and then, oh, the last one, thank you. It's one more GASB standard that compensates, which that won't be implemented until next fiscal year, so we'll work with Bruce to make sure that's implemented.
So other than the fund transfer, we're just trying to be compliant with the new GASB and making press comply with GASB's request?
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, we do have a capital asset policy, but the auditors would like to see more detail in terms of breaking out the things a little bit more, so McCain's going to send a template that we can use to work on that and implement that.
And also with the policy too, there's no right or wrong answer, so it's whatever the board seems fit.
Could you discuss the compensated absence one?
Yeah, so that's looking at, so that's going to be the standard is going to be looking at more of sick time. That's going to be coming in with calculation of compensating absences. So what that is, is any, I would have to look into the district's playbook, but if there was any vacation time that's allowed to be accrued, that would then need to be taken into regards to calculate, okay, it said all employees were to leave at the same time, how much would the district be liable to pay out for PTO that's accrued over? The standard, we're still waiting on more literature to come out since it's not going to be implemented until next year, so we'll work with Bruce, but that's the area that it'll be looking into.
Take it.
Yep, that's a great question. GASB loves dropping in new standards, so. You gotta keep it interesting.
Keep our eyes open for that one.
The outstanding check write-off.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I'm glad you brought that up. Actually, I was going to mention it. So right now, we have about 35 outstanding checks. 23 of them are with the activity fund, 12 are with payroll, so that are three years per holder, so they're right at that, you know, marker of when they should be written off. So we've got a plan of action to go through to confirm those. We think some of those just didn't get updated in our software system, but it won't take that long to go through them to flush that out, and if there's anything owed, obviously we'll turn that over to the state as required, but we actually had a pretty lengthy discussion about that recently with the auditors, so I think we've got a good plan in place to resolve that.
Maybe it's me, I'm a little, when you say outstanding check, when I hear outstanding checks, I mean a check out of rope that somebody won't cash. Help me.
That's basically what it is, so.
But that's really what it is?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
So some check that, we think most of them have been, were reissued, they just didn't get written off within our software, and that was when we had a transition of systems. So we'll, I think we'll.
So somebody should be simply accounting there.
Yeah, minor stuff, yeah. It's, we're talking about $15,000, so it's not, you know.
In all the checks?
Yeah, so it's not a lot. So, yeah.
I just have one question, something related to this, but are all your federal today all ACH transfers?
Yes. That pretty much happened when COVID happened. Most of the folks are on ACH already, but COVID helped us out with that a little bit.
All right.
Some benefits of COVID, all right.
And you are, and you are in the, in the works of implementing a policy on this? It says that they're recommending that you implement an outstanding check policy?
Yeah, yep, that'll be part of it.
Okay. Not that it's a big problem, but.
Cool. Any other questions for McCain? Yes?
The cost per student?
What page are you on?
What page, read, flip page.
Okay, 98.
Okay.
25,163 or just about $2,700 or more per head than last year? Is that correct?
Yeah, so this formula, it's quite complicated. It comes from ISB AFR, so, which I don't have with me tonight, but I'll, so I'll dive in there and kind of see, but as you can kind of see, the expenditures increase, but attendance decrease, so that would lead to an increase then for per capita. But in regards of how that 20 million came about, I'll have to do some further research on it.
I've searched for a lot of time, but I mean, I'm just going to verify what I'm reading and the amount of the increase between this and the other.
All right. Okay, that's it, I think we're good, McCain.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move along to our youth coalition incubator donation. Nick's going to come back.
Hi, good evening. So you're going to learn more about the incubator program from Michelle shortly. I'm cutting in line to talk about the community aspect to it. So essentially, the students are going to spend most of the year learning how to start their own business and how to operate a business, and then at the end of the year, they compete for some money to actually incorporate and do it. So I've been out in the community trying to spread the word, and I've had the really great fortune of having the whole team with me. So Louis is right here, could be at home with his family, and he's here to talk about this program, and it's not the first time. He's joined me at Chamber of Commerce events. We've also had Michelle, Karen right here, Anthony Lorigio, the other outstanding business teacher, Michelle Papa Nicolau, and Dr. Benson himself. So we're spreading the word to make sure the community knows that we're in the business of making businesses. We want our kids to fuel this economy. So we're looking for mentors and that seed money that kids get to compete for. So we've had some interest, and recently, we just secured $500 from the Bensonville Youth Coalition. That is a group of taxi bodies where we work together to try and come up with different opportunities for students in the community, whether it's guest speakers, or fun activities, or different programs to help kids with whatever they need to overcome challenges at school. So when I was given this pitch, hook, line, and sinker. They didn't let me get through it, they voted unanimously $500 for the seed money at the end of the year, the kids that compete. I think it's the first of many checks that are going to start rolling in, especially when we got outstanding teachers that are putting their face to it and they're out in the community, making sure that our, our partners and our residents know exactly who is leading their kids down the path to success. Yep.
Question. So in this incubator, you get donations, and then somebody has to decide which gets funded?
Right.
Does there some kind, you mean there's some kind of review process?
Yeah, it's going to be like Shark Tank, and Michelle's going to talk more about it, she's got the, she's up next. Yeah, so it's, it's pretty exciting.
All right, well then.
It's similar, we have two different roles, but the role you're talking about is a board of advisors. So we have a board of advisors that serve as sharks and decide which students get funding, and not all of them get the same thing, it really depends on the need and what they need for the next step to incorporate their businesses.
Well, is there a advisory vote on whether a project gets funded or not? Is that?
Yeah, it's the board of advisors, so we have about five to seven board members who listen to the pitches and then they get, they decide.
They have business background?
Yes, yes.
Well, what's your limit, by the way?
It depends on how much seed money we have.
I see.
And what we're learning from other schools that do this, because it's, it's a pretty common program now in a lot of our high schools, is that not all of it is ever really funded. They keep money in the, in the general fund for this from year to year, and they're very judicious about how much goes out to which teams and which teams even get funding. So that seed money grows year after year after year.
Well, have you had any successes yet with Instant Millionaires or Unicorn?
No.
All right.
Did I explain that right?
So yeah, we're out in the community spreading the word, and the youth coalition is comprised of the Village of Bensonville, the Bensonville Park District, the Bensonville Library, ourselves, and we're just really excited that they see the value in this program. At the Chamber of Commerce, I called Louis, I called him a hero, and he got standing applause, so. He's a classroom hero, really showing the kids what it takes to run a business, and then when we bring the mentors in who actually run businesses, they're going to help the kids put the pedal to metal and make the kids know that he knows what he's talking about, so. We're glad this is off the ground, yeah.
Is there any chance that Wooddale might be interested in getting on board with this as well, since we're Bensonville Wooddale School?
We got a lot of pitches out there, so we'll see. Yeah, I'll hit them up.
Okay, great, thank you very much. With that same concept, we're going to have Michelle come up and talk about career pathways.
Hi, everybody, it's so nice to see all of you. I'm Michelle Papa Nicolau, I'm the Director of Post-Secondary Pathways and Division Leader for Career and Technical Education, and I'm, I thank you for welcoming me tonight. It's a pleasure to share just some of our brightest highlights from our career pathways work over the last couple of years. I'm going to, I have no cards, and I'm ready for any questions at the end, but I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. This is a really important topic to me, I think those of you who know me know it's been a very important topic for me for a long time, but what we're ultimately trying to do is build our students' knowledge about high growth, high demand, high wage careers for their future. These are the 16 national career clusters. If you log into LinkedIn, Indeed, college sites, you're always going to see these 16 career clusters. So we thought that leaning into those and making sure that our students know about the careers within these fields, programming around these fields, offering coursework, offering field trips, bringing in speakers, and all of these areas is going to be very important for our students. For me, if our students are going to post-secondary education, which every single one of them should, we want them to have guidance, we want them to have a direction, and we want them to have a purpose in it. So them having, having an idea of what they want to do helps them select the appropriate post-secondary education and the right fit college for them. So the more that they know, the better choices they can make and the better futures they can have. The first thing I wanted to talk about in more detail is the Illinois State Board of Education College and Career Pathway Diploma endorsements. I've talked to the board about this before, this is out of one of our post-secondary ready force, post-secondary readiness workforce act, sorry. It's House Bill 3292. They just did a revision of it in 2002, Governor Pritzker passed it, and what it says is that by, by 2027, students have to have access to at least one diploma endorsement, and by 2023, they have to have access to at least three diploma endorsements.
I think you said 2023.
Sorry, 2031.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds better.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you. So not every student has to earn a diploma endorsement, but it has to be available to them. So I'll just briefly take you through these. So I'll just briefly take you through these requirements. The first one is to have an individualized plan.
Could you explain to us what you mean by diploma endorsement?
Yep, so if a student is able to accomplish all of the components within this endorsement, they can, like a seal of bilinguacy, they will have a special endorsement on their high school diploma. So they would have to incorporate all four things on this slide into their four years here at Fenton. The first one being an individualized plan. The second one being a career course sequence that includes at least six hours of early college credit. They have to participate in professional learning, which is sixty hours of an internship, career exploration activities, and team-based challenges. And finally, they would have to be academically ready for non-remedial coursework at the college level. So if they meet all of those requirements, they can get a diploma endorsement. It holds some currency with our community colleges. Our workforce development arenas across the region are getting on board, so it has some kind of meaning once students graduate. For me, whether it has a large currency or not, what this ensures for our students is they have a deeper learning experience. They walk out of here with the soft skills, they walk out of here with the hard skills, and they're ready to be leaders in their future because of the types of experiences that are involved in the endorsement. The one that we are doing right now, and we have been approved for from the state of Illinois, is the Education and Training Endorsement. We received a CTE grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over four years to implement that endorsement. And what that will go towards is transportation for our students. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Our students are on site at District Two and District Seven throughout the week, and we transport them. They work within the classrooms, and that grant helps us with the transportation costs as well as some of our staffing costs. So for the career course sequences, these are five of the areas where we have the lowest hanging fruit in terms of having those six early college credit hours. We have two courses in our Education and Training Course Sequence. We have AP classes and anticipated dual credit in our Computer Sciences. In Automotives, we have two dual credit. In Business Management Administration, we have Marketing and Management and Entrepreneurship. And in our Health Sciences, we have AP classes across the board, and we have TCD programs that have dual credit. For the Individualized Plan, every single one of the career areas has it because our counseling department does, sorry, I went a little bit out of order. Our counselors implement a developmental counseling program where they help students set college goals, career goals, financial aid goals. They help them with resumes, course selection, and this is all done through SchoolLinks. We founded a really helpful tool. We can track students, if they're setting goals, where they're at in their college research process, if they've done a resume or a personal statement. All of that can be done right through SchoolLinks.
If you, I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe one of the others, as far as college readiness and college preparedness, how big an emphasis is writing skill placed on as a part of that college preparation?
Writing skills, you ask?
Yes, just as far as essay and just across the board.
I think it's one of the core skills that we teach across the board in every single curriculum. It's essential. It's one of those essential employability skills, the ability to communicate. I was going to tell you about how I recently sat down with the Vice President of Human Resources at Epic Healthcare. She's a good friend of mine, another friend who owns an excavating and grain company. And they're telling me, what's happening? Why can't our youth, why can't they, you know, why can't they look you in the eye? Why don't they have the soft skills? They're like, what's happening? So, and I think what we do very well is we do teach our students literacy skills, numeracy skills, and we do that very well across the board. I think we also, when we incorporate authentic learning experiences, like project-based learning and these team-based challenges, where there's industry professionals involved with the students, and they are involved in professional learning, like internships, they do get to enhance those soft skills. They get to look somebody in the eye and introduce themselves, and know how to dress when they go to a place of business. And all of those pieces that you don't know what's happening. But you said it's not a high school's fault, we're seeing it from college graduates too. But at some point, we have to figure out.
Oh, I know.
How to do this.
I know, I know. That's why I bring it up with some, because of some of the, how can I put this? The lack of soft skills with recent high school graduate that I'm trying to train now. I was just on my, professionally, and it's, I don't have any hair, but if I did, I'd be pulling, it'd be gone still.
You're not alone. I mean, these are real statements from people who deal with.
Yeah, I got a beard, that's why it's great.
So, I mean, but that's why this professional learning component of these endorsements, I think, is critical. So I'm gonna highlight some of those professional learning pieces that we've, I believe, done pretty well. Or we're starting to do really well. The first one is our internship program. Our juniors and seniors are able to participate in up to two semesters of internship during their high school experience. They spend two to three periods at the end of their day, right now also at the beginning of their day, experiencing professional setting of their choice. Do you know him?
So he's coming about the phone and?
Oh, yeah, there's always a phone. Also, in our Education and Training pathway that I already, I spoke about, in every single one of the classes, it's embedded, so they don't have to take a separate internship course, it's part of our course. So in Child Development and Parenting, they shadow at an early childhood center. In our ECEE class, they spend the second semester, two days a week, at one of our elementary schools. And in our Intuit Education, they're there about six hours per week. We have some outstanding, wonderful partners in District Two with Laura Schwarz, who does the care program, and Al Butler, who's the Principal of Westview. They're wonderful partners, and they do a great job with our kids. Now, incubator, that's one of our news.
Excuse me, I have to go back, but that's the writing and the soft skills. I was really speaking towards our STEM-related areas. Because for me, that's why, because I'm working everywhere, it's really lacking.
Yep, I have one for you.
Extremely lacking, and it's just befuddling that you get that far, and those types of things are missing that badly.
So we work with the Illinois Science and Technology Coalition on a STEM challenge every year, and this is out of our engineering classes. Both of our engineering classes work with this organization, and they bring in mentor engineers. They pose a real-world problem. Last year, I think it was like how to have an efficient pizza manufacturing plant. They actually go to a pizza manufacturing plant. They talk to the managers, they talk to the people on site, and they have mentors. Last year, we had mentors from across the region. One of them was from Milwaukee Tool. They also donated some tools, which was great. But every year, they have the STEM challenge, and our students are able to work directly with professionals and compete against students from across the region as well. So again, that ability to, and those mentors are, a lot of them are online, so they're writing and emailing back and forth, and sometimes they're in person, but they have to communicate.
Right.
Yep. So incubator, this isn't out of business, so this is entrepreneurship. And Louise Garcia and Anthony Lorigio, as Rick mentioned, they're hard-working teachers who are trying to get this off the ground. This program really does take a village. It not only takes funds, but it takes time from our community members to volunteer. We have mentors who work alongside our teams. We have the Board of Advisors who judges the teams. We have community champions who help us find mentors in the community. So it really is an all-hands-on-deck. And right now, we have a solid five or six mentors. We need a few more, so if you know any service-minded people out there who might want to do that, we could really use your help. But I'm gonna go ahead and give you a quick video, it's about one minute, just so you can get a sense of what exactly this is.
It is a non-trivial classroom, and it really gives students a vibe, and it's like a living wheel that has an impact on their life at the school. It's like your own company. Everything you're doing is not because of the grade that you're gonna receive, it's to try to bring your company to fruition. The program is very scientific and nature. So what it is, is it's based on making hypotheses, and then you test the hypotheses, and then from that, you adjust your business. And you very quickly create a business that focuses off of a product.
More that students not only gain a deep understanding about entrepreneurship, but they gain a deep understanding about important people that are might want on their team.
A lot of students that haven't been able to find their path to education. This is an opportunity for every student, no matter where they are, to find a connection and have an opportunity to experience your life.
Year after year, the generations are coming up, are just so talented and so motivated. And they come together and they pitch their wonderful product idea. Each year, it's very unique and very different. Students present these ideas and how they graciously receive feedback from these venture capitalists and people that live this every day.
We walked into the incubator program, first day of school. I really think we wanted to start, we wanted to create something that we didn't see as a small project, but it is something we can work on for years to come in the future. It's like no other class I've ever stepped into. It was a great, great, great experience.
So that's the gist of the incubator program. It's very worthwhile for our students as well as our community. I went through the ISTC STEM Challenge, but I just wanted to point out that one of our students is there at the Google Headquarters. That's where they host the final challenge, so that's always fun for our kids to go there as well. We've talked about this before, but Grand Subaru has been a study partner. Our students who are passionate about automotives, and in our Automotives Two classes, they spent two whole days on-site at Grand Subaru in the various parts of their business. And a lot of them, some of them move on to a full-on internship the following year, if they're able to. Finally, and this should wrap it up, one of our significant career exploration opportunities for all of our students, regardless of what classes they're in, is our Career Fair. Right now, we have over forty reps already signed up, and we're still a month out and still campaigning for companies and professionals to come in and talk with our students about what their careers are like. If you know anybody in your network who's a software engineer, lawyer, fashion designer, biomedical investment trader, we are looking for those too, just gonna throw that out there. But those are some of the high-interest areas of our students that we get off of SchoolLinks because we know from that program what they're most interested in. So our Admin Assistant, Claudia Laclerk, she's ready to send any information to anybody you might know who might be interested in talking with kids on November twentieth during our lunch hours. And that, those are just some of the updates, and I believe passionately that this work will help students have brighter futures, and I appreciate your time and your support.
Could you pass along those professions that you just mentioned to us, or you guessed by email or something?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
Oh, there's more too. We'll take any profession, we'll take any profession, but these are some of the top interest ones. Software engineers, lawyer, fashion designer, biomedical, or investment trading. So I will get those to you, but there's many more as well. So high, you know, high aspirations from our students, which it makes me happy because those are high-demand, high-wage jobs.
Thank you, Michelle, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. I know I always go too long, I appreciate your time.
It's okay, no, no problem.
All right, we have a few items here. We're gonna kick it off with Kate and Steph to go through these.
Yeah, last Tuesday, it was November first, sorry, October fifteenth, we had our parent-teacher conferences. So we had four hundred and eighteen families that participated, which is a nice number for us. We did a couple of things a little bit differently this year. As we've transitioned back from COVID, which everything was online, we know that some parents still like that option. So what we did this year was that we had the first two hours of parent-teacher conferences, so from about one o'clock to about two-thirty. We had online options and telephone calls for parents, and teachers could be in their classrooms or a place where they could really like kind of focus and it wasn't loud. From two-thirty then, for the rest of the night, it was in-person, and everyone was in the field house, which we did that for the first time last year, but parents really, really like that, that they can see so many teachers, you know, they're not running around the building, and we're kind of thinking with the STEM wing next year, that's gonna be even harder, so this is like a good transition. But it really builds this nice sense of community too. It's busy, it's active, and it's just really nice. So I think that's something we're gonna keep. But it was nice to have that option of the virtual, where people could really focus and then in-person. We also want to have a shout-out to Lorenzo Rubio. He thought, he had the great idea of bringing in a resource fair at the same time. And a lot of it was bilingual resources, focusing a lot on our Latino outreach, which was great. So we had thirty-five different community organizations. Parents and kids were in and out, talking to people, it was really, really good. So we're gonna try to build on that. We have the idea of whenever we have people in the building as a captive audience, let's try to bring the resources to them. Rachel George-Akes also had a really very successful FAFSA night in both English and Spanish, so that was well-attended too. So we're.
Same night?
Same night. So we're layering stuff in, which seems to be really effective. So we're gonna keep capitalizing on that, but it was great. And now I'll turn it over to Steph.
Okay, hi. So for about the past five or six weeks, we've been in the process of preparing Curriculum Renewal, which is updating our course and program description catalog, which you all have, and hopefully you will approve for twenty-five, twenty-six. So a lot goes into all of our preparing for courses for the next year. So it's pretty early, but this is typical time of year to do this work. So as a quick refresher, the way this works is teachers and division leaders identify some sort of area where they think that we really need a class for this. And they research. They look at other schools, see if people have similar programs, and they talk to students about what they want and what they think about new class ideas. And then the proposals come first to ILT, which is Administration, and they're presented, and we give feedback to the division leader about what changes might make or revisions. And then presentations are done a second time, where the teachers come back, and they present to ILT Plus, which is Administration again, but it also includes teacher leadership from all around the building, all areas. Again, they're giving feedback and suggestions for potential revisions. And we're at the point now where we have everything together and revised and the way everybody wants it to look for you in the new course catalog. So that's the process. So the three new courses, we have three branded courses, and the first is PE-ten, so sophomore PE, which is new but not completely new because we had it a while back. And then we have Introduction to Green Energy, which is in the Applied Tech Program, sorry, Applied Tech Department. And then we have Applied Geometry and Consumer Math for Special Education, which is also new but not so new because Consumer Math has existed for a while. So it's just a revamp of that class. So I'll go into a little bit of detail on those three for you. So PE-ten, basically, the PE department identified a need for sophomores to not be in PE-ten, eleven, twelve with juniors and seniors. And they stated a couple of reasons for this. The first reason was that developmentally, they were seeing a big difference between 10th graders and 12th graders and what they were able to do athletically and physically. And then the second thing is they felt like the sophomores were losing out on a lot of leadership opportunities in PE activities because they were sophomores, and there were two classes of older students above them. So before we had combined PE-ten, eleven, and twelve, we used to have PE-ten. They feel really strongly that going back to that model of having a more insulated PE-ten will benefit sophomores greatly for those reasons. And then PE-eleven, twelve will be the course that remains. So sophomores take driver's ed opposite of PE-ten, so those semesters can run either way. So that's the gist of PE-ten. And then we have Introduction to Green Energy. So that is an exploration for kids about renewable energy sources and technology. It's a lot of project-based learning and lab-type activities, a lot of hands-on and applied. applied science happening there. There was a grant that funded all the materials that are going to be used for these labs and projects, and that, it's a year-long class, yeah. So that one's brand-new.
Fantastic.
And then the last new course is Applied Geometry and Consumer Math. So previously, Consumer Math was a year-long class available to special education students. The special education math teachers feel strongly that those teachers need exposure to geometry as well. So this can be taken either as a one-semester course, they can do one semester, or they can do the whole year, which offers some flexibility, depending on the student and what that student needs. But basically, it's going to be Consumer Math, but also now infused with Applied Geometry. And then this says current course revisions, but it's mainly some renaming that's happening, and I'll explain to you what it used to be and why, what the reason is for the renaming. So in our Applied Technology Department, we have, the new course is called Applied Engineering. It used to be called Engineering Design. That came from feedback from students saying that when they signed up, they thought they'd be designing things, and they're actually doing more hands-on activities with engineering. So that was a change to help students understand what they were signing up for. In the Business Department, you've heard about Business Incubator a lot tonight. That was previously Introduction to Entrepreneurship, and then it was also VEI, and that used to be the sponsor for the program, and now since the sponsor is incubator, that's the name change there. For Computer Science, Foundations of Coding is a year-long class that used to be Introduction to Coding and Advanced Coding, and it was causing confusion, because the kids thought that they needed, like, advanced-level coding for the certain classes and things like that. So to just make that a one-semester clean name, so that people understood what they were doing, it's Foundations of Coding. And then for Computer Science Discoveries, it was previously CS Discoveries, and there was concern that kids didn't know what CS was, so just to make that a little clearer. Then Family and Consumer Science, we have the new course, it's called Teaching Internship. Right now, that's Intro to Education. The kids, I think, were saying basically that that implied a lot of coursework, like learning about just education in a classroom, but since these kids are going out of the building three days a week, and it really is field work, we changed it to internship. And then finally, the PE 11 is just a change where we would be taking sophomores out of PE 11, 12, so now we have PE 10, and then PE 11, 12. So the course guide is there. If there are any questions, I would be happy to try to answer or direct your question to someone who can.
Ever popular for you, Jose? I know you've been waiting for this all night.
Yes, yes. So these have both been resolved. Thank you, Karen, for your help with this. Lake County Gazette, as well as the Contractors Adjustment Company, both have been resolved.
Okay, and that's it for informational items. Next item is consent agenda. That the Board accept the consent agenda as provided?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Roll call.
Rego? Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Same.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the acceptance of the 2023, 2024 District Financial Audit?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Rego? Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the resolution regarding abating the Working Cash Fund?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Bruce, could you?
Sure. We talked a little bit about this earlier this evening. We know that Transportation Fund is struggling a little bit financially. We are going to devote more of the levy portion of it to the Transportation Fund as we move forward. We did that in the '23 levy, we'll continue that in the 2024 levy, but we also need to move some money from the Working Cash Fund to the Transportation Fund. We did a transfer like this last year as well. Part of what's driving the higher expenses in the Transportation Fund are the purchase and leasing of some vehicles that we needed to acquire that are greater than what we typically would do in a given year. So we're asking the Board to make this transfer, so we can shore up the Transportation Fund. And it's a partial abatement of the Working Cash Fund.
Roll call.
Rego? Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the adoption of the Fenton Community High School Board of Education, District 100, and Service Employed International Union, Local 73 contractual agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Rego? Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the adoption of the Fenton Community High School Board of Education, District 100, and Service Employed International Union, Local 73 contractual agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Rego? Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 2025, 2026 Fenton High School Course Catalog as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Who's taking it?
Give it to Kent.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Rego? Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Does anyone have any committee reports?
The last foundation meeting was canceled. We'll see what the next one holds.
I do not have any updates for land or net sec.
I think so.
Earlier, we held a finance and facilities meeting where we discussed the 2024 property tax levy, the summer 2025 interior renovations and ideas process. We talked about the developments so far with the STEM wing and the furnishings, the transportation department staffing, and once again, the SEIU contractual agreement. Our next board meeting, Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, at 7:00 PM with a tentative finance facilities committee meeting at 6:00 PM prior to the regular board meeting. The Fall DuPage Division meeting is Wednesday, October 30th, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
And just to add, if you need a ride there, the bus is leaving here at 5:00. Will probably be a van, but figured, at least speaking, the bus will leave at 5:00, and I think everyone's attending.
Triple R A Conference will take place on Friday, November 22nd, Saturday, November 23rd, and Sunday, November 24th. Hope you all see, see, you brought me this right. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.
Good night, the Pons. Aye.